Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call our meeting to order. Stand for prayer and pledge allegiance. Join me, please. Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight to serve you and to serve one another. Father, I pray we be good stewards of what you own. Father, be good stewards of what the citizens own. Help us tonight, Father, to seek after you and to understand what your will is, and then to have courage to do it. I thank you, Father, for the servant-hood that all of these counselors do to serve you. And we thank you, Father, that you're here with us. Your presence is here with us. We pray we seek your wisdom tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I cease. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a privilege to be able to make the proclamation tonight. This is the proclamation. Whereas Dr. Don Rowley has served thirty-three years as an educator and thirteen years as prior public school superintendent. Whereas Dr. Rowley holds an MS in curriculum and instruction from Oklahoma State University, a BS in natural sciences from Northwestern Oklahoma State University, and an EDD in city administration from Oklahoma State University. And whereas Dr. Rowley has been named the 2017 OASA Oklahoma Superintendent of the Year and OASA District Six Superintendent of the Year three times in 2012, 2015, and 2017. And whereas Dr. Rowley has received numerous honors, including 2014 Oklahoma Administrator of the Year, 2006 Coca-Cola Joseph B. Whitehead Educator of Distinction in Northwestern Oklahoma State University Athletic Hall of Fame. And whereas Dr. Rowley has served on numerous committees and councils, including State Superintendent Joy Hoffmeister's Advisory Committee, serving as president of the Oklahoma Association of School Administration and chairman of the Oklahoma Advisory Council from 2016 to 2018. Now therefore, I, Larry Lees, Mayor of City Pryor Creek, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as a day to honor Dr. Don Rowley, as he pursues greater endeavors and opportunities this fifteenth day of June two thousand twenty-one. Now, Dr. Rowley is not here today, but his brother Chris is here to receive this proclamation. And I think it would be appropriate, although Dr. Rowley's not here, to give him a hand. Dr. Rowley is a wonderful person on the march, and he loves his house. Item three, petitions from the audience. I don't think we have any tonight. Item four, department head reports. Building inspector, recognize Mr. Kenny Young.
You have any questions for me?
How many inspections have we done this week so far?
I've lost count.
It's only Tuesday.
Yeah, but everything's going good, so.
Thanks, Kenny. Emergency management. Recognize Mr. Johnny Jansen.
The only thing I've got is we're gonna do some, a little longer testing for the sirens tomorrow. We usually do them on Wednesday at noon. Typically, when you set off a siren, they run for three minutes if it's a live warning, and then they shut off. Well, tip, when we do our testing usually weekly or every, when the weather allows us to, we usually run them for about twenty or thirty seconds and cancel them. So I need to make sure that they'll actually shut off at the three minutes like they're supposed to. So we're gonna run them a little longer tomorrow. I just wanna make sure everybody was aware.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Johnny, did you say you had that report from MSHAC and Associates on Park Branch?
Yes.
Can you make a copy of that sometime and distribute it to council? Or anybody who wants it, I'd like to have a copy of it.
We've, uh, we've got that. We've got that in our archives.
It's new, and it's not that old, is it?
No, it was about six, eight months old, something like that?
Yeah, eight, nine months, something like that.
Like, I'd like to see it for sure.
Okay. You had us get ahold of me, or Mayor's got it as well?
Larry's got it. If Mayor's, you've got it, just.
Yes.
Get, all right, see what that says. All right, thank you.
You bet.
All right. Fire Department. Recognize Chief, BK.
We actually talked to a couple of guys, because of course, everybody's cutting down hay and stuff like that. So all the guys are getting all the brush trucks going and all that stuff, make sure it's ready. Hopefully, we can make it through without doing all that. But the other thing is, item O, I talked to, that's about, if y'all don't mind, just take no action on that tonight. Talked to the radio guy. Dude has some backorder on parts and stuff like that. There's some wishy-washy stuff, trying to hammer down the date to get that tower crew and everything. So he's gonna call me tomorrow and try to figure it out. And it might work out to where we can do that with another place that's close to us, where they're gonna be on the cell tower. So it might even cheapen that up a bit, but if you don't mind, take no action on that tonight. That's all I got. Unless y'all have anything. Just in case I sneak off to go to one of those hayfields here.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item D, golf. No report. Item E, library. Recognize Ms. Carrie Rarrett.
Hi. I don't have my normal statistics sheets for you today. It's been wild at the library, and I'll tell you why. We have officially surpassed three hundred people registered for our summer reading program. To give you an idea of how big that is, we planned for a hundred and sixty-five. Because in two thousand and twenty, we had a hundred and seventy-five-ish, and in two thousand and nineteen, we had three hundred and sixty-nine. So we felt like somewhere in the low numbers, but no, three hundred. So it's awesome. It's feeling a lot like the way the library used to feel before the pandemic started, which is a wonderful feeling for all of us who've been there for a while. I think it's a little dismaying for our new people who've never had a summer reading and haven't worked at the library before the pandemic, but they will get through it. Yeah, so that's all I've got. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
Item F, Parks, Parks Semper. Mr. Frank Powell.
We're staying busy. Still have a lot to do, but we're finally getting into that, for we, I guess, summer routine. And we made it through Memorial Day. Everything went well. And I had no complaints, so I'm hoping you all didn't. Everything seemed to go well. A lot of compliments. Splash pads booming. I want a big shout out to guys at the American Legion. They have all been, almost finished putting up the Bobby Buck Playground for us. It should be completed tomorrow. Shout out to them, guys. Other than that, just staying busy.
Anything else? Thank you, Frank. Police Department?
No report.
No report. Thank you. Rec Center. Recognize Ms. Jerome Hopkins.
Hey, guys. I don't really have too much to discuss today, just other than we had a hundred and sixty-one new members this month, which is awesome. It's definitely filling back up in there. The parking lot's full. Classes are definitely full attendance. I've actually taken on two days of the aqua, or the aquatics classes, because of course, the aquatic classes are getting pretty big. We're gonna be posting the custodian job hopefully next week to get another custodian in there. The pool party, or the pool's super busy. We've had seventy-two complete swimming lessons, sixty ongoing, and there's thirty-plus on the waiting list for that. So I mean, Jackie's definitely doing her job since she's been back, and the place is definitely picking up. So it's been nice to see people in there working out. Any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Street Department? No report. We'll move to item five. Mayor's report. A, CMS Willbrook update, City Council regarding emergency services, library expansion project. Like to recognize Ms. Adam Garrett.
Update on the progress of the building. We are doing great. We have all of the earthwork complete. We're having a little bit of a hang-up with structural steel or rebar, but it's supposed to arrive the twenty-ninth of June. We'll be able to start actually going up with the building with structure, so we are on schedule. That's the last schedule we had discussed at our last owners' meeting, so everything's going well.
Everything's good?
Yes, sir.
Need anything from us?
No, sir. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much, Adam. All right. Item B, discussion of possible action regarding approval of it as an addition to the emergency center library expansion project to include a museum room for the purpose of preservation, display of the famous Bill Rabbit, Painted Pony, and other Native American art. The addition is estimated to cost six hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Would be funded via the City Pryor Creek, two thousand and nineteen bond fund. Is there a motion?
Make that motion, second.
Motion, Shipwood, second. Smith. Discussion.
How big is this gonna be? Is it gonna have a rotunda? That's a lot of money.
Got a, got a, got a picture. We've got a picture in the, in the packet there. And we have, we have done quite a bit of meeting. We've also done quite a bit of trimming down, that sort of thing. Mr. Graver is here. Would you come to the microphone? Jim?
If you remember, we first had a design, and it was close to seven hundred thousand dollars, and we all went, whoa, you know. Excuse me, eight hundred thousand dollars. And we did, as Larry said, there were some meetings. We went over and looked again at the piece of art and shrunk the building down considerably. And changed some materials inside and made it where we thought it will work now, but it'll also meet the demands or the needs in the future. We didn't wanna make it too small, because then you can't put more art in it. You don't wanna build a building just for one piece of art, in other words, just for the horse. So it's designed to hold art exhibitions. It can be changed out. Actually, it's large enough that you could have small conferences in there, discussions of art. And so I think it fits the size. It'll work now, but it'll also work in the future. And it's expensive, but then those type of buildings are, there's a lot of glass in it. And it's glass because it's art, and it's idea, people can drive down the street and see it at night or see it during the day and draw them in. Therefore, the glass, we're taking the molins out between the glass panels, so the glass butts together, so it looks just like a solid glass wall. And that's part of the expense, too. And then that's part of the fact that it's a museum.
How secure is the glass?
Oh, it's secure. It's like one-inch-thick glass, so. And also, we're adding bollards around the outside, so if by chance I see whether somebody slid off the road, they won't go through the glass. And that would be a disaster, so we've done that, so.
We have met with the library board, and library board is, is certainly on board with managing that facility and being able to supervise it ongoing. Carrie, would, do you, do you wanna speak to that at all?
I can.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
One of the visions that we have for this room, if you decide that we can have it, is to use it as part of our comeback to the community's living room from the pandemic. Because that's kind of what we do at the library, or everybody is welcome to come in and stay and just be a person for however long we want. And we really think it would be great to incorporate this room in that piece, so to have comfortable furniture, to have art reference books on shelving, where we, we have, I think, six sculptures right now in the building. And so we can put shelving units in that room with art reference books and display the sculptures on top of those. And then people are just, they come in, and then they're surrounded by beautiful art. So that's kind of our vision with how we will use this room.
Over time, over time, there have been, a few years ago, we had the art appraised. The different arts pieces that we had at that time, we had to praise. We have, we have over fifty items of art that have been contributed to the city. And those pieces of art, there's not, there's not really a way to display those things. The appraisal of the art came up to somewhere around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of pieces of art that had been donated to the city over time. And the rabbit, we think of, but there are other, there are many other artists who have produced art that's valuable. And we don't really have a place, a place to display that.
So that's, we plan on using that facility to display that art?
Absolutely.
We have, as the mayor said, we have a lot of Native American works. Most of those were donated to us in nineteen ninety-three by Bill and Karen Rabbit. We also have a Willard Stone piece. We have, we have lots of stuff. We have Remingtons. We have, I've lost the name. Anyway, the mayor has all of our, our catalog of the art that we have, and right now, we're displaying them as best we can. A few years ago, we went through the pieces that we had and transferred some to other departments, because we weren't able to, to display the works that we had in what I felt was a respectful manner. Basically, it was if there was a nail on the wall, we hung these artists. And so, you know, we've, we've pinned out our personal collection, but, you know, we just really will definitely have more, more space for that.
Need a higher additional personnel?
I don't believe so. We will have to change how we function throughout the day. We will have line of sight to that door, but we do not have line of sight in the room. So one of the things that we can do is simply walk the building, and we do that now anyway, as we straighten shelves and shelf books. So we can add that room as part of our walkabout whenever we do it. But there would not be staff in the building, or in the, sorry.
There gonna be security cameras, monitors?
I mean, there should be.
It don't tag long. Hard draw gets a lot of stuff stolen off their walls all the time, out the door.
Yeah.
The way this is set up, though, you gotta go into the library to get into the museum. There's not access from the outside. So if someone is gonna take something, they've gotta come right out directly across from the front desk.
So there's no exit doors?
Well, there's one exit door, but it has alarm on it. You have to go through two doors. But that way, somebody couldn't walk out another door. It's not right.
So this hasn't been designed willy-nilly without, you know, without thinking about many of those things. If it is a room, if it's a room that is able to appropriately display art, appropriately be used as a community room, and standing the test of time to be able to accomplish the intended goal, that's, that's the way it's being designed. Also, Tracy Rabbit has, we've consulted with her. She's an artist. She, her, her work and works, work of, of her dad is, you know, at different places, you know, around the country, displayed in museum, displayed in art, in art displays in several places, so. So that, I mean, it's a, it's a room that we could all be proud of. It's also a room that would be accessible and would be also visible for anybody who drove down, down our, down our main street, so.
I've got a question. We have it budgeted as six hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, and you're saying it's coming out of the bond money. We've done, since the price of lumber and all this other stuff has gone up, and wiring and everything's gone up, I know the price of our emergency building's gone up, the price of our work at the library's gone up. Just exactly how much are we, are we, do we even have the money to attempt this in that ten million dollar bond?
Oh, yeah, within the bond funding, we do.
I'd like to address the financials portion of it, say it sometime. That's.
Sure, go, go right, go right ahead, Jim.
In front, in front of you, in front of you all, you all have a spreadsheet, okay? I provide you a hand-scratch spreadsheet, okay? It looks like this. Maze fund balance, okay? Oops.
Is that your phone?
Maze fund balance, and I, and I tried to project this out, because when it, when this thing, when this thing came to me and I looked at it, one of the things that it kinda disturbed me, it was because, and before I go into the financial portion, when we passed the bond issue, we listed several projects that we wanted to do, you know? A lot of projects we wanted to do. And when I say that, and then we said, and we prioritized those projects. We said, if anything come up urgent needs, we could move the urgent need project ahead of the other projects. And so I looked at all this stuff right here, and I, the projects that we had was the old city hall, the Saratoma. Now, Saratoma was done by mediation by those people, I can't think what, and the Reckless Saints.
By, by a whole lot of.
And they did a great job, but there's still about another hundred thousand, probably we need to do some windows and some stuff. Then you, and Jim was part of that. Soccer lights, Pryor Youth Baseball Association. And I do know that, you know, they're having tournaments out there right now with, and they're having some issues with some, with some safety issues, and some of the money could possibly go there pretty quick, but twenty, but, you know, and so. But then, then we had the live, then we had the internet, and then the pool. The pool just came up, just recently. I think the pool is a project we need to look at, and the internet was a hundred thousand. I say that to say this, when I, when I looked at this thing, and that, those projects there amount to about five million dollars, because I put three million dollars on a new pool. I don't know if that's close or not, but I put that on there. And so I went back here and started looking at the fun maze fund balance, and I took the financial sheet, I took our financial sheet, our financial sheet dated June's financial sheet, page fifty-five, on, on a, page fifty-four on the June, on the maze financial sheet. It showed a fund balance of one million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, which has a very top of the page. I looked at the revenue for June, then I added that estimated revenue for June of a ninety thousand. That means our fund balance is gonna be about one million, five, five hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-eight, twenty-five cents. I know that in, in June, June thirtieth, July first, we have a payment due. We have two payments due a year, one in January and one in June. Of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, approximately, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Two hundred and eighty thousand in principal and hundred and nine thousand, two ninety-three in interest, if you'll see your sheet. So if you take that off of our fund balance, that leaves us a fund balance of one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five, fifty. And you have that in front of you. Then I, then I took, then I, then I took this thing and divided it out by monthly, just to project, see how far we could go with this thing. Because right now, we have one point one million. And so the, if you take month, you may as month or year revenue, it showed nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-six cents what was taken in through, through May. June's revenue's ninety thousand. That means we're gonna take in a total revenue off the bond, one million, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-six cents. So then I took our two payments. Seven hundred and seventy-eight, five eighty-seven, fifty. That left us, left us a balance of each, at the end of the year. That, take that away from the one point one, balance at the end of the year is three hundred and five thousand dollars. That's what our balance is, unexpended fund at the end of each year. Now, as this bond project goes forward, the way it was designed, and this is exactly the way it was designed to help pay for future projects, and it's doing exactly what it was supposed to be done. And we're supposed, this council and some other people are supposed to help us prioritize the projects. And so that leaves us three hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-six cents at the end of the year. Well, if you take that three hundred and five thousand, one ninety-two, eighty-six, project it over fourteen years, because we're already out, twenty thirty-five is our last and final payment. And I can tell you, our last and final payment for the bond is eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It's not, it's not seven seventy-eight, it's eight thirty-five is what it will be. That's, because that's through BOSC and.
That's based on the amortization schedule.
That's, that's what that will be, and I've confirmed that with BOSC. You know, my thing is, you need to stay, you need to keep about a million dollars in escrow, just in case something happens. We need to keep about a million. We've got a million one, okay? So we got about a million dollars in escrow. So at the end of this project, at fourteen years, we're gonna have, you take that three oh five times fourteen, that's another four point, four million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Plus, you know, plus you have the million in escrow. So what you've got there is, when this project, all said and done, you're gonna have nine million dollars for Emergency Emergency Services Center. Then you're gonna have this five, you're gonna have about thirteen to fifteen million dollars over a fifteen-year period, what we projected out. Now, when I originally projected this thing out over twenty years, because this thing does not fall off. This thing is, whenever it was set up and designed, it was not designed like this building here. When this building here was, we had the money in the bank. When this building here was, we had the money in the bank, we had to pay the note off, it was done. We do not have to do that to this right here. And we can let it fall off if we want to, we don't have to do that. And so I say that to say that, I think that, my opinion is, I think that the, and I know that the idea of the horse, the painted pony coming back to the library, I think it's a great idea. I think that's, I was one of them that brought it to Larry and, and to the library. I think it's a great idea. I don't think we should put six hundred and five thousand into this thing at this point in time. I think you, my suggestion is send it back to Mr. Graber. I, when I looked at this drawing here, you all have a copy of the drawing on phase three, you know, I think what we do is house just the pony at this point in time. And you just take that one wall over here where it's gonna be addition, where it's over here, it says, sound, mechanics, emergency exit. You reduce the, the pony to that area right there. And you make that's where that is to house the, to house the, the, the painted horse at this point in time. Or tell Mr. Graber, I think about two hundred and fifty thousand, and then when we have more money, then we project it. But I honestly believe that, when I look at it this way, I, and I don't think it's a priority, I think the pool is probably the most, number one priority, I can tell you right now, Chad Wolf sitting back here, he'll tell you right now, that fifty-two teams, how much money he brought into this town for state one revenue, and I know what we used to bring in at P Y B O, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would make him healthy tomorrow. And so, that would make him healthy tomorrow. And I don't know what that is. I say that to say, I'd like to send this back to Mr. Graber. Because I don't think we wanna reduce our fund balance, our fund balance to five hundred thousand. I think we need to keep a million in there, send this back to Mr. Graber, it's just a place to house the painted horse, painted pony at this point in time, then to do the library. Now, is it gonna be a challenge? Yeah, for the simple reason, you got a roof, you got a pitch, and there's some other things, some opportunities that he's gonna have to look at, and we may not be able to do it for two hundred and fifty thousand. But I just don't think we need to have the museum art replaced to do the museum art room at this point in time. I think we need to look at it. So I'm ma, so I'm making a motion to table this and send it back to Mr. Graber to design something with, in the mind of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to get us through this, to get us some of these projects, and then see where we're at financially, to, you know, and see what happens. I think it's a wonderful project, I just don't think we need to spend the six hundred, the six hundred and fif, six hundred and five thousand, whatever it is, I don't think it should go over the, the project, some of the other projects that we've identified when we did the bond auction, and especially over the pool. So, you know, when you look at it, we have great opportunity to do a lot of things with this money over the next fourteen years, over the next twenty years. This money, when in twenty years, this money will be twenty-five thousand, twenty-five million dollars. It's one of the great, you know, it's, it's absolutely wonderful what we'll be able to do. And so, I say that, one point one, you take six hundred and five thousand out of that, now it leaves you four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand in your fund balance, and I think that's too low. That's my opinion. So I'm, I'm making a motion to table this, send it back to Mr. Graber to design something with two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, if possible, and put it back together. And that's my, I'm making that as a motion.
Could, could I bring something up? Uh, there's a, uh, there's a motion on the table to, there's a motion to table. What if we haven't finished our discussion?
Yeah, we haven't finished our discussion.
No, we haven't, we haven't finished our discussion, we're still in discussion, so yes. Okay. I had an idea, and I don't know if this is gonna work or not, and I'm not the only one I was talking to people, we might be able to do this. And I know it's not per se the city of Pryor, but we have a really nice, uh, building and complex out at the fairgrounds. And there looks to be a lot of room out in the fairground where we could probably put that pony and actually build a, a wall around it, whatever you want to, whatever you wanna put around it to protect it, so that, so that people can't get on it and let their kids ride it or whatever, you know? But anyway, uh, there's, there's, it looks to me like, having been out there, that there's plenty of room for that pony to go there. I'm not talking about all the artwork, now that's a different ballgame. But we have the grand building that we're fixing to start work on and, and bring it back up. And our art, uh, community is, is stationed in that building anyway, right? So if we had an area up there that we could put the art that we wanna display, because that's where the art people are to begin with, and, and fix the grand building up, then that would give us a place for art, it would also give us a place for the pony, and it seems like we have a lot of things going on out at the fairgrounds. So would that be a place that we could display the, the pony and, and have a lot of viewers, if you will?
I wanna keep the pony in Pryor, right now, in the county.
Yeah.
Well, I, and I'll tell you right now, I asked county commissioner the other day, and they said they've said no.
Really?
Yes. Now, I do believe personally.
I asked, I asked county commissioners to begin with.
Yeah, that's right, and they said no. One of the, one of the things that you gotta realize at this thing, when this thing's all said and done, and I'm just thinking it's because it's, the money's not really, when you look at this thing all said and done, you know, you look at the old city hall building, that's a good spot for it, for the art gallery, but right across from the police and fire station, that's, you know, and right there at the library, coming down twenty, that's gonna be a site for, you know, economic development, that's a possible, you know, people are gonna come back, that's gonna be what that's gonna be in the future. So you, that, that, I think that needs to be at the library, I think it needs to be across from police and fire station, and I think that's what it needs to be. I don't, and the county's already said, no, I just don't think at this point in time we, we need to be doing that much of elaborate. We've got, we got some years, we've all got years left in, left in us, and as our sales tax grows in the next couple of years, we can do this. My, the only challenge that I think we have right now, biggest, I would say the biggest challenge that Mr. Graber will be having is, is when you look at this thing about the roof. You know, how you, how do you plan on putting on a roof and doing this same way in order to incorporate? That's gonna be a challenge, but I'd like to see if he can do that, because I have, he's an O S U grad, and I have all the confidence in the world, you know, O S U graduates.
You lost me there.
And so, but that's, you know, and, and Troy, I think it's a good, good deal, but I think it needs to stay in Pryor, and I think that's the proper location, but I just, the money is portion of it, and I just don't think it's priority, priority right now to spend six hundred and five thousand. I, I, like I said, I think you could give chat, I think we.
So perhaps, so perhaps to, to trim, to trim the number down and, and to see, see what we can, what we can do otherwise, it's probably a good, good idea to, to try to do that.
I think that, I, I think it needs to stay in Pryor, I think it does need to stay at the library.
Yeah, me too.
I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to looking at shaving the numbers down if it's a possibility. I also don't wanna run into a situation where we set this up just for the painted pony, and then with the intention of a few years down the road redoing or adding to, and then nothing ever happens, and we left all this other artwork out of the picture. So I just wanna keep that in mind when, if, when we're adjusting numbers, if we shave this down so much, and then we never revisit it.
The council chairman's point, there is funding available. There is funding available to do, even if it is at six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
There is funding available.
Yeah.
And there will be funding available for the other projects going forward. We're in the process of doing a library expansion. If we're going to, if we're going to, if we're going to do this, now would be the time to do it, rather than to delay it or to, or to do it halfway.
And that's my concern, is that we'll get set up, do this partially, and then with the expectation, we'll do the rest of it five to six years later, or however long, and then nothing ever happens with it.
See, and I, and I, and I agree with that, but I, and I don't think, as long as you have this council, I don't think you do that. I think Jim, I think Mr. Graber, will give us a design where we can incorporate this, because I, again, I think that some of the other projects are just as important as some of this thing. We need to look, we need to at least take a good, hard look at this before we go spend six hundred and five thousand dollars and put it ahead of the, some of the other, you know, when I look, and again, I'll say, when you look at some of this, I, I don't have a problem putting it ahead of the, uh, uh, Saratoma, you know, and some of the other places that, but, but some of the other, but put.
So, so I don't see the necessity to pit one against the other, because we're going to, we have funding now, we also will have funding in the future, as you said, because of the way this, because of the way this was structured. So.
But I agree, I agree with funding, and I, that may not be the proper way, but I think the funding is, when we passed the bond issue, when we passed the bond issue, these projects were identified as priority projects, and this wasn't part of that bond package. And so, I don't think, I, I just, I feel like it's improper to put the library ahead of the other project at this point in time, and I, and I'll stand on my motion to table and send it back.
Other discussion? We have an opportunity to discuss. Anybody else? There's a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Shropshire? Call for vote.
Can I ask, can I ask a question first? Another question. Mr. Graber, how long will it take him to come back? How long do we anticipate coming back, or we can work with him? Give us.
Probably three or four days.
Yeah, I know better than that.
He's an O S U grad.
Did you say he's from O S U?
Yeah, he's from, I know we do, we, Oklahoma State Cowboys, we work miracles, but we don't, and a lot of things, and not in sports, but we work miracles all the way.
I, I think, yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I believe I understand the money problem. I think my concern with what Brianna said is there's a tendency that you build something and you never go back to it, and that happens, you know? I think the problem with trying to do something nice at this time for the horse, or what you want, what you really want with visibility, can you creep it to four hundred?
Possibly, I, you know, it's possible. Yeah, I'm just saying, come up with another number, just, I think six hundred's too large, I'm not gonna say four hundred's not too.
All right, I'll come up with it. But I, you know, if, there's a certain thing, if you, if you, if you just wanna have the horse period, you just build.
We don't wanna cheapen it up.
You build a glass box and put the horse in it.
Yeah.
But if you want anything else, you gotta remember where you can add to in the future.
That's, there you go.
And, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll come up with something.
Good. Uh, I would also like to ask Mr. Garrett, I mean, we're, we're talking about this, this is, this, this would add to a project where there's a projected timeline.
Yes, sir.
Uh, would you like to comment about, about that?
The benefit of doing the project now would be able to utilize our subs that are already on site. We wouldn't have to bid the project out, or be each individual scope out, we'd be able to reach out to our subs that are already there and already localized, potentially get better prices. We would keep a, a close eye on those prices in front of our budget, so if, if somebody comes in way high, we could go out and get additional prices, but, you know, for electrical, mechanical, masonry, we've got a good opportunity to get good air prices while the, while the subs are on site.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
So I mean, that is one benefit.
Yeah.
Since we're talking Indian art, is, has there, has there been anybody that maybe went out to our, uh, Indian tribe partners and see if they'd like to be part of this endeavor? Well, I think that's, I think that's certainly a possibility, certainly a possibility to do that. Might be something we could do also, if they, if they were interested in displaying Indian art, you know, that might be somewhere we could. Most of the time, uh, most of the time when you do museums or do museum rooms or that sort of thing, sometimes philanthropy is something that is involved in it, and giving, giving philanthropy an opportunity to participate is, is always wise. That may be just another route, you know? There's been a motion and a second and significant discussion. Any more discussion? The motion is to table? Call for vote.
Hatcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for the discussion. Item C, discussion, possible action regarding retaining the services of professional pest control or mosquito control. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Shropshire? Second. Smith. We have, uh, we have presentation in our packet from last meeting, we also have, excuse me, we also have professional pest control here, and we also have Ms. Nina Roberts here. I'd, I'd ask Ms. Nina if you would like to come to the microphone, and we have the information in the packet that we've had an opportunity to review.
Yeah, I, I distributed additional information. Again, I wanna thank you all, and especially thank the mayor for listening, because I appreciate the mayor and this administration and this council, that you are listening to the citizens, and, and I think it's, it's good for the citizens to know that they can come here before you and be heard. Again, I want to stress, this is not a campaign against Mike Kennedy or professional pest control in any way, shape, or form. I was looking over Mike's petition in favor of spraying, and there were a hundred and nine names on that petition. Pryor's current population is nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-five, which with these petitions, it only reflects one point eighteen percent of the population. So I feel like we don't have a really good feel for that. I called some more loc, more local cities and asked them about their mosquito spraying. Locust Grove said that they do spray citywide two times a week, but they don't hire out. The city does it. And they will not spray property that is requested as no spray. Salina does not spray. Choto does not spray. Adair does not spray, and the, the little woman was really nice, and she was suggesting to me that, you know, it's best to spray your own property and how you can best rid mosquitoes, which she gets. Clermore does not spray. Wagner sprays one time a week, but does not hire out. The city does it. And they also will not spray property that is requested as no spray. Veneta does not spray. Owasso does not spray. Muskogee does spray one time a month, June through August, and the city does it, they do not hire out. If you wanna follow, the CDC has a report on West Nile virus cases, and if you look at the second page, in two thousand nineteen, Oklahoma only had six cases. According to the CDC, Oklahoma only has point five oh to point seven four incidences per one hundred thousand of West Nile virus. The Zika virus has even less nationwide. In two thousand, in twenty twenty, there were only four Zika virus cases in the United So if you wanna follow along with me on the highlighted paper, the most recent information I found from professionals is from June first of this year, twenty twenty-one. Deborah Landau, an entomologist and conservation scientist, scientist at the Nature Conservancy, and Mary Travaglini, a certified organic land care professional and organic landscape manager at the Montgomery County, Maryland Department of Environmental Protection. These experts agree that mosquito treatments, including the alleged all-natural variety, can harm you and your environment while not actually reducing mosquito populations. Only point one percent, according to Cornell University, of the pesticides, on the average, reached the targeted pest. When, there was a study by Pimentel at Cornell that looked specifically at flying insects like mosquitoes, the average was less than point zero zero one percent, or only one in a million. This is because the droplet size of a pesticide must be small and must float in the air. The droplet size of a mosquito spray must be so small that the chemicals must float in the air, but they also drift out of the target area, killing other insects or mingling into the air we breathe. Sprays can only kill mosquitoes that are in your yard at the time of spraying. Mosquitoes typically fly one to. Mosquitoes typically fly one to three miles so they can quickly repopulate your yard. A commercial mosquito treatment will be more likely to kill butterflies, bees, and ladybugs in your yard at the time of application than the mosquitoes you're trying to get rid of. If the treatments target standing water, beneficial insects that eat mosquitoes like dragonfly larvae will also be killed. If the spray is focused on wet areas such as piles of wet leaves, chances are they're killing far more fireflies than mosquitoes. Sadly, birds will often pick up insects killed by insecticides and eat them or feed them to their young. If we turn the .001% effectiveness into dollars and cents, a millionth of $300 worth of spraying is .0003, which is not even a third of a penny. In fact, we would have to spend $10,000 before we can even get one cent worth of value. Over time, mosquitoes become resistant to pyrethroids, the active ingredients most mosquito treatments use, through gene mutation in mosquito populations. Mutations in this one single gene are enough to make mosquitoes in one area resistant to the pesticides very quickly. Companies that spray on a regular schedule will make your mosquito population become resistant even faster. So essentially, you'll be left with a yard and neighborhood full of super skeeters. There's a reason why Disneyland in a part of Florida with lots of mosquitoes doesn't use pesticides to control mosquitoes. They take an approach that neighborhoods, HOAs, and businesses can all use right here. They ensure water doesn't stay standing long enough for a mosquito to lay its egg and hatch into an adult, which is about seven days. Commercial pyrethroids are synthetically produced to mimic the same properties of the pyrethrin's and chrysanthemum flowers. Both chemicals paralyze the nervous system of many insects, but synthetic pyrethroids and the undisclosed chemicals they are mixed with are designed to be more lethal. Pyrethroids are neuropoisons in humans and ca, and can cause rashes, respiratory distress, allergic reactions, headache, nausea, convulsions, and more. The additives can cause a host of other reactions. Pyrethroids are also very toxic to fish and other aquatic life and spread easily on the wind to neighboring properties and into streams. The chemicals can persist on surfaces for days, further killing insects that come into contact. So what I have learned through my research, first of all, did anybody do any research on their own? Raise your hand, anybody?
What you gave us.
Oh, well, okay. So what I kept finding is that pesticides do not kill all varieties of mosquitoes because the mosquitoes eventually become immune. And it made me think that before I asked my yard to not be sprayed, we were having mosquitoes, and I was still even while being sprayed. And after learning this, it dawned on me, well, you know, they're getting immune to it, and not all varieties of mosquitoes are targeted with one pesticide. I just want to give a shout out to Frank Powell for using non-harmful to pollinators weed killer in the parks. I was walking at Whittaker, and I stopped Gary, and he was spraying, and I asked him what he was spraying, and he showed it to me. And I looked it up right then and there, and so, I don't know if Gary told you, I think I told you, but thank you for doing that. This is possible. I mean, the city can work with Mike or work with anybody to come up with alternatives if you have to have mosquito control. But most cities are only spraying as needed or not at all. And a lot of them are using, the ones that are, are using their city to spray. I think we have to be really careful because times change, our environment changes, that we don't just rubber stamp everything because that's what we've always done. I think sometimes we need to look outside the box. And I know that I'm probably fighting a losing battle, but the point is to make you think and to look to the future for your children and your grandchildren. So again, I thank you for the opportunity for listening and taking into consideration what I have brought before you. And I am not an expert, so I don't know if I could answer any questions.
Did you get a petition?
I did not, you know what? I actually prayed about that, and, because I kept thinking, okay, I'm going to get a petition, I'm going to get a petition. And God kept telling me, no, I have no idea why. So, you know, in my obedience, I mean, I was ready to walk out the door with the paper and hit the streets and.
Well, the gentleman in the back, you're, you're with Little League Baseball, correct?
Yes.
Do you have any problem that your baseball games, like people talking about mosquitoes eating them up while they're at ballgames?
We have one field, two, four, or five fields. It's pretty close to the pretty, the outfield sometimes, but nobody's complaining about it.
I know we used to go, you're talking about, over at Locust Grove, we used to go play baseball at Locust Grove, and it was right by a creek, and it, they would eat you alive.
But yeah, if you're in your water, yeah.
Yeah, and I was wondering if they were having any incidents at their fields, because that's something we might need to look into also.
And these other towns you reference, or do they have the same drainage problems that Prior has? Since we're like surrounded by flood zone and we have a hard time of getting water out of the town?
Well, that is not something that I asked them, but I think that would be a great question for you to call and ask them as a city councilman.
Now, you also referenced the cities that do their own spraying. Are you suggesting that we go buy our own equipment and vehicle designated for that and incur extra cost to maintaining it?
I think you should compare. I think you should look at different alternatives, that may not be the only one, but I think you should compare.
You asked if we did some research, I actually called to see if, who did it, you know, because I have some friends that are in other towns and some counselors. And the ones that didn't, I asked them why not, and they don't know why. Yeah, so I don't know if it's same, I was thinking what you were thinking, maybe they don't have the drainage.
Maybe they don't have drainage problems.
I don't know, I don't know.
I got water that stands in my ditch and won't go nowhere.
Yeah, well, I think that's a city issue.
Any other questions for Nina? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thanks, Councilor, for having me again, I appreciate it. Baseball fields, we have sprayed the baseball fields five times. That is where the, the fogging begins. When they're not playing games, that's where we start. And yes, that ditch is a problem, and it's always been a problem. And we're going to do, based on some more research, research I've done, we're going to do some more. The problem in the past with that ditch is we would use another alternative method of, of spraying it. Then it would rain, floats all the chemical away. We put an adult liquid, adulticide in that water. Rains, it's gone. They do now make some larger, and then we use these little, what they call mosquito dunks, they're little donut-shaped object that floats on top of water, coats the water with a oily-type larvicide to stop the, the larva from emerging into a mosquito. When it rains, it's gone. Now we've, I've discovered a, a larger, heavier type block, pretty expensive, but I'm going to buy those, purchase those on top of what we're already doing, and put those in the water. It will take a really heavy flood to wash that block out of. It will sink, it's down the bottom, dissolve, and administer that chemical without the water. So we're going to try that. The baseball fields have always been a huge concern for us, and that's a, that's a heavy target area. And I appreciate Nina calling me saying, don't spray my yard. I want everybody to realize, we're not really targeting spraying people's yards. It's not something that's, that's directed right at their yard. You have to understand, when we drive that vehicle with that unit in the back of it running, at eight to 10 miles an hour, it emits the proper amount of fog out. That, that fog goes where it drifts, where the wind takes it, and that's, we don't know how far it goes. What we like to achieve, though, and we even do the alleys, we do every alley in town. A lot of the alleys have a little bit of growth on the back of people's properties. They're not quite maintained like our city streets are, so there's a few little water holes here and there in them. So those alleys are very heavily targeted areas. Shoto, she mentioned Shoto did not spray. I've sprayed Shoto a, a three-month mosquito problem, or program beginning June, the 1st of June, and the end of August 15 of the last 18 years. They did not do it this year because they didn't have the money in their budget. Tulsa fogs, they identify the areas of concern and fog. And about my petition, that petition was a sampling from each ward, from all y'all's wards in, in the city. That petition was done two hours on Friday, and it was done three and a half hours on a Saturday, back to back. Again, that was a sampling of, of signatures I received from people, and I approached people when they were outside their homes, in their yards. I didn't knock on any doors. I just drove around, when I saw somebody, I got out, and I explained to you last meeting, the question I asked them, are you in favor of the city of Prior fogging for mosquito at night to reduce the number of mosquitoes, the population of mosquitoes in your area? And I did not have one single person say no. I had one guy on Bryan Street walking down the street, don't know where he lived, asked him about it, he was, he, he was concerned that he didn't know enough about it. I didn't have time, I explained a little bit, I showed him the study from LSU. He wanted a copy to go research it, and I thought, I probably couldn't even find you if I looked for you. So I, I just went on, and we'll count that as a no, that's the only no I had. And I told anybody, if you're not in favor of it, sign your name, put your address down, and write a no next to it. If you gentlemen, ladies, would like a larger petition with more signatures, I'll get that for you. It was very time-consuming, it was five and a half hours on the Friday before Memorial Day weekend and Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. I had a lot going on, but I felt that that five and a half hours I invested in getting that petition signed was an adequate sampling from all the different wards in the city of Prior.
Don't, don't you have a license to spray? Don't you have to have a special license?
I have a license.
A special license, it's not, at one time, the city did spray a long time ago, and we had a sprayer, and it was, and the equipment was, we, we, we did it, and, but it was rather lengthy, and we, and we had to, time-consuming, get somebody to work those hours and everything else, and it was a tough. That's why we went to Mr. Kennedy at the point in time when we did, we contracted with him, because it was, it was a problem finding, needing somebody to do it and keeping their license, because as soon as you get their license, they go somewhere else, like anything else, so, yeah.
Well, if you were to take over this project by yourself, you would have the cost of licensing. You could go through the Oklahoma Department of Agriculture and get your license, and it would be a private license, they call it a private, private-type license. That means that your person doing the mosquito fogging, that's all he can do. Now, he'll learn how to do it, and he'll eventually possibly go get his state license to conduct work out in the, out in the public. But you're also going to have the cost of licensing, you're going to have the cost of equipment, and I spent $20,000 on mine. But I would sell it to you for a lot less, if you want to take it over. You've got the cost of maintenance. Last year, I put a new pump on it, $1,900. The gentleman that sold me that pump drove over from Oklahoma City, and we spent all day long taking that unit apart, and he didn't charge me a penny for labor. He goes, we're happy to have you, we also sell chemical, Mike, and I go, give me about $10,000 worth of Fermax UL4-4. So, and I gave him a couple hundred-dollar tips in the body of J and L, and he goes, I sure hope that breaks down more often. Of J and Ls, or JLs. You've got the cost of chemical, and then your big cost, another big cost is going to be your cost of insurance. I carry $1 million liability, and it's very, very expensive. It ain't cheap. Now, we, she just talked a lot about pyrethroids. We don't use pyrethroids, we use permethrin. I've been using pyrethrin and pyrethroids for 41 years. I've not ever had any rashes, bad headaches associated with using that chemical, but I was six foot four when I started this business. No, I've always been short. I think we're doing a good job. I didn't have anybody say no. And again, if you'd like a more, longer petition, I'll go get it for you, I can do it. And I'll bring you the no's also. And I think when we figure those percentages, there's going to be a lot higher percentage for people saying, yes, let's do it, we like it, we're in favor of it, it helps. I don't kill every single mosquito in Prior, but we sure try. And we're going to try a little bit harder with this, with these, the standing waters. We've identified some pretty good spots, down behind the Wool Ramah off the corner of the junior high, that ditch down there, right a block further down where you turn to go to the park shelter, excuse me, big ditch along there. Every year, the school would call, call me, and I would go down and wade through poison ivy and all kinds of other critters and get the ditch behind the bus barn, which is the same one that comes off of Second Street there and goes around down through the park, and then out behind Trina's haircut and shop, under the highway on the other side, behind the pawn shop, and through the railroad track. We know where that ditch is. We're going to try also to, to be better by putting these dunks in the water, and they're heavier, I think they're going to stay. If we have a heavy flood, I do still think they're going, they've, they've assured me, you, they'll stay in the bottom of that ditch with normal flow. So, questions, gentlemen, ladies?
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We've heard the presentation, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion, counsel? Call for vote?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Hatcher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, city attorney's report, Mr. Ritchie.
Six A is discussion of possible action concerning the July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022 collective bargaining agreement between the city of Prior and the Prior Police Lodge, number 116 of the FOP.
Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Say it again.
Motion, Chipwood, second. Smith?
Can we go through the, can we go through the changes, one, make sure?
They should be highlighted.
Just, the public will know too, though?
Sure.
Sure, if we can, just so the public will know also what the changes are, I think it's just good to know, so. Can we take them one, just say what the highlighted changes are, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly, certainly. Looking on page five, we have the change of dates, it's also on page four.
We're talking about, right now, we're talking about, this is the police?
Police.
Yeah, okay, all right.
On page 11, during the, we've added during years 12 to 19 of employment, accumulated the rate of 1.667 days per calendar month, or 20 days per year, we've added that item. Also on page 11, in that same graph. Uh, also on page eleven, in that same graph, uh, this is Article fourteen, uh, adding the twenty-five days, uh, year, for, during year twenty and subsequent years of employment. I, on page thirteen, Article seventeen. We have the, uh, the bereavement, uh, leave. We've defined as spouse, child, parent, brother, sister, grandparent and grandchild, and then, uh, uh, one-day bereavement leave be allowed upon the death of grandchild, aunt, uncle, nephew or niece. So, we've expanded that bereavement leave. Thank you. And, uh, I believe we are also considering doing that, uh, citywide. Uh, you can see on, uh, uh, page seventeen, the compensation rate, uh, talking about qualification pay. Uh, qualification shall be compensated rate of a hundred seventy-five dollars, uh, per month for special qualification, not to exceed seven hundred dollars per month.
And what was it before?
I believe it was one fifty. Am I right about that?
I think you are correct.
Brian?
Yes.
There was a one fifty, but there wasn't a limit.
That's right.
That's correct.
So, there's one, this is one seventy-five and?
And then not to exceed seven hundred.
Okay. One fifty and it wa, and it was a limit of how, and there wasn't a limit, right?
Right. And then on page eighteen, um, this is for, uh, uh, timeout when they're, when they're, uh, having expenses out. So, we, we updated that, uh, it was woefully low, uh, to eighteen thirty-three per meal and maximum fifty-five hundred dollars per day for meals. Uh, you can see Article twenty-eight, also on page eighteen, and everything that's highlighted there. I won't bother to read all of those, but, uh, we updated that list, and it seemed to be, uh, appropriate for the, uh, the equipment.
Well, these were items that they were already receiving, we just basically put in the agreement.
That's true, there were, most of those items, they were receiving, I think we probably added a few. Item, uh, then on page twenty. Uh, this is, uh, section five, that extends over to page twenty. In performance of, uh, official duties, each employee shall, uh, shall be five hundred fifty-dollar annually, five hundred fifty-dollar annual employee budget.
And what was that before?
Uh, committee, do you remember? No, off the top of my head, I don't know.
It was four hundred.
Four hundred?
On page twenty-one. Article twenty-nine, uh, section B there. Associate's degree and or complete immediate, uh, intermediate certification. And then, uh, item C, and or advanced complete certification, so we, we, uh, more clearly defined that. Page twenty-five, Article twenty-three. Um, all members shall receive a three percent, uh, pay increase according to the revised pay plan attached hereto, and that is, uh, a cost of living increase. By the way, the, uh, that three percent cost of living increase, uh, is being, being promoted citywide for all city employees. And then twenty-nine, the difference on the, uh, uh, date, page thirty, you can see the, uh, uh, highlighted items there of the pay plan.
Are we going to, the items that affect the, you know, when you go back and look at your bereavement leave, the, uh, some of the items that are common to all city employees, the days, sick days, now, is there a plan to provide that to all city employees, the same policy, you know, where you get extended those days, is there a plan to do that?
Yes, yes, that, that would, yes, that, that will go through budget personnel, uh, through, uh, uh, coming up presentation, uh, in July.
Okay, that, so it's, that's only, only?
It was part of the conversation.
Huh, that was part, I wanna make sure that, that's all part of the conversation, that the employees get the same, uh, bereavement leave and all that other stuff, I'll direct it that way, good to go.
Actually, the bereavement leave is what started those conversations.
Yeah, and there's, those other items, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Trammell, are there any questions? Any other observations, Mr. Ritchie?
Agreement looks good.
Call for vote?
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes. Item B.
Discussion possible action concerning the July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-two collective bargaining agreement between city of Pryor and the Pryor Fire International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO-CLC.
Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Chipwood, second, Nance. If you look at the, uh, uh, fire collective bargaining agreement, notice, uh, the highlighted date changes?
I only have one thing that I'd just like to add a question about is, it's on page seventeen. On pa, the overtime hours is defined in section three. Explain to that, do we have any idea what that cost may be to the city? And what the difference is to do this, this contract from the last contract?
That provision only applies in emergencies. If you look, state, local, federal emergencies, uh, what we're doing there is, that's the one that's got the language in it about, uh, election to receive cash wages.
Yes.
Or, yeah, so, that provision would apply under those emergency situations when somebody's called out. And it allows them to receive at their election, at the employee's election, either cash wage or comp time, regardless of the banked comp hours. Because, you know, we have a two-hundred-hour cap on comp time. And if you have a hundred and ninety hours of comp time in the bank and you incur overtime, then in the previous provisions, it requires them to receive comp time. They don't have a choice of getting paid a wage instead of receiving comp time. So, the change, really, all it does is say overtime hours that are worked when they're called out on an emergency can be paid either in cash wages or comp time at their election. Still subject to the two-hundred-hour max that they can carry on the books of comp time. They just want to be able to make the choice.
My question is, is, is a called-out emergency or a volunteer emergency? You know what I'm saying?
Declared emergency.
A declared, well, but my, but my point is like, and I don't want to say it to be negative, like, look, you have an emergency, you have a, an emergency in Joplin, Missouri, okay? It's a flooding emergency, okay? They're asking for volunteers to go to Joplin to spend the weekend, okay? It's a natural, but it's a volunteer thing that we, the city of Pryor, volunteered to go down to assist them. Is that part of this process, or is it just, or isn't it?
I think if we elected to?
We elected to have overtime hours.
Emergency and send them out, and they had overtime?
But, but yeah, if we, so who, you know, Mike, what, then, who would have that, who, you know, it'd be up to the mayor to say yes or no to, for, to go, because we have a lot of sense, instances where that, we're cut, we're asked to go for situations like in Texas, whenever they had the flood, or Louisiana when they had, and we send a crew down for two or three days or, or some of the things right there, and they go, you know, that's what we're after with this thing.
FEMA pays that, though. So, we get reimbursed FEMA with that?
But really, the, those kinds. Bottom line is that that doesn't increase any, anything, it just gives them the ability to say, "I want to receive my wage in cash."
In cash, instead of comp time.
Okay.
So, it's not adding to the ability to get overtime.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on the fire?
Did they change the bereavement leave and stuff like that, the same way?
Everybody.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Is that in here, is, is that?
Some of the differences on the fire were?
Actually, in the contract.
Do what? Is, is, I don't?
I'm not sure the bereavement leave is actually in this, but the goal and the plan is, is to have that throughout the entire city.
City, right, and that, and, okay, that's what I want to make sure of, okay? Holidays?
On page nineteen, uh, section eight, you see the, uh, uh, "No employee local shall receive monthly incentive compensation for more than five incentive certifications pursuant to Article seventeen." So, that was a, that was a change.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Article eighteen, you can see where the wage, uh, is defined at, uh, three percent.
All right, okay. All right, thanks.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none, call for vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Uh, item seven, discussion of possible action on consent agenda. A, improvements of June one, two thousand twenty-one council meeting. B, approved payroll purchase orders through June twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one. C, approved claims for purchase orders through June fifteen, two thousand twenty-one. D, acknowledge, uh, receipt of deficient purchase orders. E, approve May appropriation requests. F, discussion of possible action authorizing Pryor Main Street to close South Eight Air from Graham to Southeast First Street on, uh, June seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, from four-thirty to eight-thirty P M. For a red, white and blue bash, Graham Avenue will not be closed. The event was rescheduled from May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. G, approved year-end budget transfers recommended by certified public accountant Coker and Coker as needed for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. H, discussion of possible action regarding approval, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Citigroup Health Insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. I, discussion of possible action regarding renewal of Citigroup Life Vision and Dental Insurance. J, discussion of possible action regarding continued off, offering of optional voluntary life, short-term disability and long-term disability. K, discussion of possible action regarding offering a flexible spending account as employ, to employees as part of their insurance package. L, discussion of possible action regarding accepting bid from Premier Signs and Design in the amount of five thousand twenty dollars for a new sign at Centennial Park from Park Capital Outlet Account zero-two-two-one-nine-five-four-one-one. Other bids received, image builders, seven thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars, twenty-eight cents. M, discussion of possible action regarding surplus and trade-in of the following vehicles from the Pryor Creek Police Department. Two thousand eight Chevy Tahoe, VIN ending in four-eight-four, um, oops.
Right there at the bottom.
Yeah, at the bottom. A two thousand seven Pontiac Grand Prix, uh, VIN number ending in two-five-six-eight, uh, one hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-five miles. This is a forfeiture. A two thousand eight Chevy Tahoe, VIN number ending nine-four-eight-four, one hundred eighty thousand two hundred thirty-eight miles. Uh, two thousand eight Honda Ridgeline, VIN ending three, uh, two-nine-nine-five, uh, miles, one hundred four thousand one hundred nine. A two thousand six Cadillac S D, VIN ending two-seven-nine-nine, uh, one hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-seven miles. This is a forfeiture. Excuse me. Request method of disposal of surplus, uh, surplus property per city code two-dash-one-dash-four-E four. Trade-in, the city council may determine and prescribe that the property be disposed of by trade-in for replacement equipment at such values and prices as deemed to be in the best interest of the city and consistent with market rates. Item N, discussion of possible action to approve Pryor Creek Police Department's trade-in vehicles listed above to Pryor Chevrolet, uh, Pryor Chevrolet Buick GMC at the best interest of the city for the trade-in amount seventeen thousand dollars in a, on a, uh, two-hundred, two thousand twenty-one Traverse LS uh, four-wheel drive that was bid at thirty-one thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars for a difference of fourteen thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars to be paid out of police drug forfeiture's account number nine-six, nine-six-five-five-five-five-five. Other bids received, classic Chevrolet, two thousand twenty-one Traverse LS, thirty-five thousand thirty-nine dollars, and sixteen thousand two hundred dollars for trades. Suburban Chevrolet. Excuse me. Suburban Chevrolet did not have a new Traverse LS, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars for trades. Jim Glover Chevy, two thousand twenty-one Traverse LS, thirty-four thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars, and currently have not received bids for the trades. Item O, discussion of possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of three thousand seven hundred sixty dollars to Muskogee Communications Incorporated for repair to a repeater on a water tower for the Pryor Creek Police Department from Fire Repair and Maintenance Account zero-two-two-one-seven-five-zero-nine-one. Item P, discussion of possible action regarding approval of jail use, uh, agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of the Ma, County of May's, State of Oklahoma, with an increase in daily rate to twenty-five dollars beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Item Q, discussion of possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of four thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars to Municipal Utility Board for, for the city's portion of the cost of improvements to traffic signals at the intersection of State Highway sixty-nine and Ninth Street on May twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, from Street Signs and Sign and Signals Account fourteen, one-four-five-five-zero-three-two. Item R, discussion of possible action regarding Municipal Utility Board's recommendation of a reappointment of Ken Rain, Dr. Ken Raines to the Municipal Utility Board, seat number two, expire, term expiring six-thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Item S, discussion of possible action regarding reappointment of Paul Stevens to the Library Board, seat four, term expiring six-thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Item T, discussion of possible action regarding accepting the resignation of Matthew Arnold from dispatched position at the Pryor Creek Police Department effective June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. These are the items of the consent agenda, which items would counsel like to remove? O, T. Item O, item T?
F, G, H, I, J, K, M, N, P.
Items to remove? Any others?
I think we just did them individually, anyway.
Items to remove, F, G, uh, H, I, J, K, M, N, O, P and T. Do I hear a motion to approve all of the other, uh, items on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion, Ketcher, second, Nance? Call for vote?
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item F, discussion of possible action authorizing Pryor Main Street to close South Eight Air from Graham to Southeast First Street on June seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, from four-thirty to eight-thirty P M on, for a red, white and blue bash. Graham Avenue will not be closed, the event was rescheduled from May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion, Chipwood, second, Smith, discussion.
My question is, food trucks gonna be there, and it's just like it was before, and some of the other things, and live music, is that what this is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other discussion? Call for vote?
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item G, approved year-end budget transfers recommended by cert, certified public accountant Coker and Coker as needed for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Smith, second, Chipwood, discussion.
Does he, is he giving us a timeframe of when he expects to have those? Because in the past, sometimes, you know, in last year, we, there were some of the transfers like that. When I look at the, uh, oh, street departments and transfers and things like that, that I didn't, there's not.
We don't do?
Don't do streets, just, just a general. He's giving us a timeframe when we're gonna close, open, is he gonna give us timeframe when he's gonna come over here and close those POs? I would think that we would ask him to do it sometimes so we could do our budget, because we'd need to know what those transfers are, so we can get our fund balance at the end of the year to get this done. And we'd need some kind of a timeframe from?
Normally, he always does that before we get to the end of August, but?
Before we get, before we get to, may, uh, so we need to get this done before, because I think we have to file our budget in August, and we need to know where our fund balance is at that point in time, so, okay.
I trust you'll get it done by, by that time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, call for vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Rickfield?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item H, discussion of possible action regarding approval, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, Citigroup Health Insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Chitwood, second.
Second.
Shropshire. Discussion. We have, uh, we have our representative here present tonight. They've been sitting patiently going through this meeting.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for me? Do you just want me to give you a real brief?
What about, what's the deal with Blue Cross and Blue, you know, did, some of the things you've got, we're hearing about Blue Cross and Blue Shield and not gonna be insured and stuff like it? Huh?
In St. Francis?
In St. Francis, yeah.
So St. Francis and Blue Cross Blue Shield technically right now are outside of the contract, so St. Francis Health Systems Providers are not in the network as we would know it. Um, however, temporarily, because they're still in discussions, all claims are still being processed as if they are in network until July twenty-eighth, through July twenty-eighth. So, hopefully, optimistically, everything, we know they're still talking, and that will be sorted out before that date. Um, in discussion with the insurance committee, my understanding is they decided to be best and less disruptive for the city's employees, to wait and give it time to see if that doesn't sort itself out before that date, instead of flipping everybody now to another company and paying more money, by the way, because we did get those quotes. Um, and holding that until we have to do it if that's necessary.
And, and on top of that, uh, the city, it was only a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred forty dollars spent at St. Francis. So there wasn't a lot of money.
Fifteen employees would be impacted based on the last twelve months of claims.
Some of these questions I might ask, you, I wasn't there, I'll be apologize if I didn't go. I chose to go watch the Oklahoma Sooners at the College World Series.
See how I run.
But loss ratio, how was our loss ratio this year?
Seventy-seven percent. So it was good.
It was.
That's fair. That is right where you want to be. Um, if you go any higher than that, the insurance companies look at it as a loss. Any lower than that, of course, will be great. You just don't want to get any higher. So the initial renewal came out with a twenty-one percent increase from Blue Cross. We negotiated that down to eight to fit that and just add a little bit for trend and inflation.
Insure Oklahoma, we, I'm sure we don't have very many people insure Oklahoma anymore, I would hope, do we?
Not many, and you know, they may have heard changes there to Medicaid expansion in Oklahoma with, is changing who is eligible for insure Oklahoma. So anybody below the hundred and thirty-eight percent poverty level now will be shifted to Soon Care for Adults or Medicaid expansion. Anybody above that, within the parameters of insure Oklahoma, still qualifies for that program.
Do we, and you may not be able to answer this, shop claims, do we still have a high ratio of shop claims?
Don't, actually, there's just a few.
Okay.
Which is average for this size group. Claims have really improved over the last couple of years.
That's, that's what I was gonna say. You used to have pretty high shop claims.
Very significant improvement.
Thank you. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
We have, uh, we have made a concerted effort, uh, with safety, with safety and, and trying to, trying to understand those things, and, uh, I think that is, uh, working in our favor. Other, other discussion? Hearing none, call for vote?
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Rickfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Motion carries. I, discussion of possible action regarding renewal of Citigroup Life Vision and Dental Insurance. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Chitwood, who second? Ketcher. Discussion.
Increase dental, stuff that stays pretty much same, we go with same companies and.
Dental with Delta still, no change in benefits or rates. VSP on the vision went down ten percent. And then the Group Life Insurance of Mutual of Omaha, no change in rate there with an additional two-year rate guarantee on that line.
Thanks.
Other discussion? Call for vote?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Rickfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item J, discussion of possible action regarding continued offering of optional voluntary life, short-term disability, and long-term disability. Motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion, Chitwood, second, Smith. Discussion.
Do we have many P, employees on those?
Actually, yes.
Do we? You know, at one time, we didn't have many, and you've done a good job, Bernie, you, you and your staff have done a good job explaining that and getting more people involved with that, and you take the credit for that.
Thank you. I, I take that, um, very seriously, educating employees.
Yeah, and you've done that well. I just want to say thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other discussion? Call for vote?
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Rickfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item K, discussion of possible action regarding offering flexible spending account to employees as part of their insurance package. Motion?
Second.
Motion, uh, Shropshire, second, Chitwood. Discussion.
Explain how that's gonna work.
Okay. This is a fun one. So a flexible spending account, first of all, is not insurance, so it's not an insurance product. It is a funding mechanism. It is a monetary account. So the advantages to the employer are simpler and smaller, so let's start there. Um, the employee can put up to two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars each plan year, which will be July through June, into their own flexible spending account tied to a debit card where they can access those funds anytime they need them. The benefit to employers is, um, just having a better benefit program, which you already have an excellent one, but this just kind of rounds it out to attract and retain employees. But all of those dollars that are contributed by the employees, it's a hundred percent employee-paid, all of those are pre-tax dollars. So it lowers the city's FICA tax liability, which offsets the cost of a hundred and fifty dollars a year to set the whole plan up, and then five dollars per month per participant for just the administration of the cards and the claims and all of that. Uh, we looked at a couple of different companies. Flex Plan was the one that the, um, committee decided was their, their choice, their local company out of Tulsa. Um, kind of a local person too, actually owns that company, um, so it's a good fit. We have a great relationship with them, great service, technology is good. The benefits to the employees are twofold. It's also tax-free money for them. Um, but I think more importantly, having used these, especially when I was younger and had, you know, braces and things like that, it's, um, it's a nice cash advance, because when you enroll in the plan, the first day you have the, the benefit, you have access to a hundred percent of your year's contributions right away. So if you have a surgery or something coming up and you need a quick thousand dollars, you can use your FSA money that's loaded on your debit card to pay for it, and then that payroll deduction is consistent for the remainder of the plan year. So it's a nice, easy way to spend budgeted expenses. Um, there is a use-it-or-lose-it rule. You may have heard of that with flexible spending accounts. Typically, in a normal year, at the end of the plan, any money you have left on your card, if it exceeds five hundred dollars, you lose that excess fund, and you can only roll over five hundred. That's another way oftentimes employers kind of offset any expense for this, because the employer keeps those leftover funds. But because of COVID and all of the relief packages, people haven't been able to do the things they expected, um, you can carry over one hundred percent of your twenty-twenty-one balance into your twenty-twenty-two year. So next July, no one would have a risk of losing any money, and they could try this. Again, through education, we'll be careful to explain to everybody, these are budgeted expenses. They have to be qualified, medical, dental, vision expenses, so prescriptions, your glasses, your, you know, braces, whatever it is. Eye surgeries are common, and there are also a lot of things that aren't covered by insurance now, like over-the-counter medications, um, acupuncture, you know, some of those things that insurance wouldn't pay for anyway. So it just gives people access to more money, lowers everyone's tax liability, and it's really a win-win all around.
Does the employees have to put up the two thousand dollars upfront?
They don't. So it is, you know, over the fifty-two or twenty-six pay periods a year, divided up equally. I can spend a hundred percent of, I can spend my full two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars on July first, but my paycheck's gonna see an equal amount.
How do you manage if somebody quits?
There isn't, there is an opportunity, there is a chance that if someone has overspent their fund, the city would lose on that, but I can tell you ninety-five percent of the time, businesses, employers always win on this, because of all the.
And I, I understand, but, so if somebody got, spent two thousand dollars, whatever it was, a hundred percent of the deal, two thousand, and then they quit two, and a week later, then the city's liable for, for that balance?
Yes. That is not usually part of the education piece. I don't want to advertise that.
But it, it won't take long for people to figure that out, you know?
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
But you know, that's what you're after this thing.
Someone would have to quit their job, so.
Not now, anyway.
Okay, the end of the plan year, is it just good for twelve months? Or, I know a lot of these plans will give you three extra months after your plan year to finish spending. Put you in your account. Is this fifteen months or twelve months?
Old plans used to be set up that way. It's a popular setup, but then the IRS allowed that five hundred carryover. So most employers started choosing the five hundred carryover instead of the fifteen-month year. It, it worked out better for employees. You can have one or the other, but not both.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Good questions, good discussion. Anybody else? Call for vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Rickfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Ms. Britton, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Thanks for continuing. You need to trust us to manage all this for you.
Item M, discussion of possible action regarding.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask you, when you read that, don't read it all. I have just a brief question on, on that whole thing, so you're ready for it, okay?
Yeah, I was gonna thank you for bringing that off there.
Yeah.
Item M, discussion of possible action regarding surplus and trade-in of the following vehicles from Prior Creek Police Department. Uh, Mr., uh, is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion, Trammell, second, Chitwood. Mr. Trammell?
My question is, is you've got one item, two thousand six Cadillac, S.D., one hundred sixty-two thousand, and it says forfeiture, okay? That, and that's a forfeiture vehicle. Doesn't that money have to go back, doesn't that money have to go back in the forfeiture account instead of the general account? Okay, it can't go back into a general fund, can't, doesn't have to go into forfeiture and seizures account that we have established. It can't go into a general fund to buy a truck. I'm not saying we don't need to do it, but that money, whatever, that value of that two thousand and six trade-in needs to go back into forfeiture's account?
No, as long as the, um, because we're not selling that vehicle, um, if we were sold it, it would have went back into the drug account that is set aside, um, that we're actually using to pay for this. So as long as whatever we buy is used to somewhere, process and do, not do drugs, well, that sounded really bad.
That's alright.
Process of arresting somebody or going after drugs. Drug investigations, there we go.
So we, so we get, so anytime we, anytime we surplus a vehicle, we, we can do it, and we just use it to surplus, and we can start using it, that, uh, drug money to buy vehicles with instead of using our capital money?
Except they had to be used, like, to investigate.
Well, but, you know, we, but everybody investigates stuff, you know?
Okay, so we actually, we've been doing this for a long time.
Okay. I just, that's, that's my question. I'm, I'm clear, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, that was really good, using on my end, but.
I understand. Okay, I just want to make sure, didn't you ever need to go back into that seizures account, that money there? Okay.
Thank you, Council Trammell, appreciate that.
Mr. Trammell, I want to say that we don't want to spend the drug forfeiture money on that car, but it got general, I'm good with that.
I, to make, to, to, well, to, to me, that, whatever that value of that vehicle, this is me personally, I think that money needs to go back into that account.
Same thing, we don't want it to count, we spent it on the car, so.
Yeah, I do, well, there's two different accounts.
No, there's only one, so the drug for, drug forchers account.
You did? Okay.
So are we not gonna vote on the one that he decided to skip? Because we did not vote on it at all. I. K, L.
K? Which one?
He pulled that off.
Yeah, yeah, we voted on K.
Vote on K.
Or L. He pulled it off also.
No.
No.
No, we didn't.
No, we did not, yeah, we did not pull out, put off L.
Oh, I thought we did, because I had it marked that way. Alright, sorry.
I had it marked, too, so.
Alright, well, part, did we pull, did we pull off L?
I didn't pull it, either did we pull off L? I don't think so.
No, no.
It did not.
Okay, we have.
I pulled off enough.
We have a, we have a motion second on, on M. Call for vote?
Chitwood?
Yes.
Rickfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item N, discussion of possible actions to approve Prior Creek Police Department to trade-in the vehicles listed above to Prior Chevrolet Buick GMC as in the best interest of the city for trade-in amount seventeen thousand dollars on a two thousand twenty-one Traverse LS four-wheel drive that was bid at thirty-one thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars for a difference of fourteen thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars. We paid out of police drug forchers account nine si.
Motion to approve.
Nine-six, nine-six-five-five-five-five-five.
Motion to approve. He answered my question.
Second.
Motion, Trammell, second, Smith. Other discussion?
Traverse?
Call for vote?
Rickfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item O, discussion of possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of three thousand seven hundred sixty dollars to Muskogee Communications Incorporated for repair of repeater of a water tower for the Prior Creek Police Department from, uh, Fire Repair and Maintenance Account, zero-two-two-one-seven-five-zero-nine-one. We've been requested, uh, a no action.
Motion, no action.
Second.
Motion, no action, second, no action.
Who seconded?
Uh, Smith. Call for vote regarding no action.
Trammell?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Rickfield?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item P, discussion of possible action regarding approval of jail use agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of the county of May's, state of Oklahoma,